The call is meeting to order. We have determined we have a quorum. We have one more member on the line that's not with us tonight and expecting Ms. Fontana to call in also. If we could all stand, the minister that was coming for the prayer part of the new agenda is not going to make it tonight, so we're going to have a moment of silence in the place of the prayer. So if you would bow your head.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, you've had a chance to see the agenda. Is there any, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second emotion.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Recognitions. Dr. Hill?
We actually get to do a little way in-house recognition. A little closer to home. And we're glad the news media is here because this is pretty big deal stuff. Uh, Dr. Abida, that he's in the house, is on. Miss Brown? There you are right there. You'll come up. Come on, guys. So what we'd like everybody to realize is that even during COVID and during everything that's happened, I mean, we always talk about the hurricane, that's kind of where it started and it's just gone since then, that our teachers have not stopped working, our staff members have not stopped working, and the concept of education has never stopped and kids have not stopped learning. And we've worked really hard to keep this motivated and moving, and the state of North Carolina is recognizing this as well. So this year, the state puts out a top 10 schools for graduation rates in the state of North Carolina. Pender County has two of the top 10 schools for the state of North Carolina. So I'd like to congratulate Topsail High School for 95.2% graduation rate. And I'd like to congratulate Pender Early College High School for 100% graduation rate. And I have a national Blue Ribbon School recognition at the national level. Only of a small percentage. Additionally, I guess I'm presenting this to the chair. Can we come around? If you think about it, we've got two schools that are that highly rated, it would make sense that the school district is also recognized as a top 10 school district in the state of North Carolina for graduation rates at 93.2%. We gotta get a picture of this one. It's a lot of work.
Congratulations and thank you for all the ones that made that happen. That was a lot of hard work from others other than up here. So moving on with the agenda, we are up to public comments. We had no sign-ups. We do have one call-in, a message.
Hi, everyone. My name's Heather Allen. This is for a public comment at the January 11th meeting. I just wanted to call to say thank you so much to Mr. Smith and Mrs. Fontana for their email responses. I wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Burns for the very informative phone conversation last month. I wish I could be there in person, however, I'm actually in San Francisco visiting my 93-year-old grandmother and other family and friends. And my friends and family out here in California, they have been telling me that they go to bed at night not knowing if their kid's school will be shut down the next day. There's talk about forcing kids as young as five to be forced to wear N95 masks all day. And all I can think of when they're telling me these things is that I sleep like a baby at night. I know that you all have our kids' best interests at heart. I'm so thankful that our kids have the freedom to choose if they want to wear a mask or not. It's been so nice seeing all the kids' faces when I dropped my daughter off at school. I also don't worry about the school shutting down. A few months ago, I asked my daughter after picking her up from school, just out of curiosity, I asked her, how often do you think about coronavirus? And she's 13. Her literal response to me was, shh, never. And I can't put into words how happy that made me. And I think it's every parent's dream right now to know that what's been affecting so many kids' mental health, it's not affecting our kids. So I just wanted to say thank you because I know right now that school boards, they're really playing a huge role in that these days, and I appreciate you guys doing everything you can to keep things as normal as possible. In the email I sent, I did suggest one thing, and that was, can y'all possibly vote to not have to vote on the masks anymore and we could just maybe put this all behind us? I know Mrs. Burns mentioned there might be a law, but if there's not, just something to think about. And last thing I'll say is that, Mr. George, I got to meet your granddaughter at church a few weeks ago, and she's so sweet. She looks like a very, very healthy baby. So congratulations to you, and just thanks again for everything you guys are doing, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Bob. Moving on to the agenda, we're on item 7, 7.1, District COVID Protocols and Processes.
Yes, sir. Dr. Blumente Wright is not here tonight, ironically. He's listening in, but he's just listening in. He has COVID. So we have Mr. Ken Taylor up here tonight, and he'll be talking to us a little bit about the report, but before that, he may want to introduce the Health Department on the line.
Yes, Ms. Steele, are you online?
Ms. Moser. Ms. Steele, Ms. Moser is on the line.
Yes, Carolyn Moser, I'm online.
Awesome. Would you like to go before I present the few slides that we have?
If it's okay, I'd like to hear about your slide. I don't want to have to, I don't want to repeat anything, so if you don't mind.
That's fine. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to speak if you wanted to first. So your board draw your attention to the COVID dashboard numbers that were printed off today. They are already on the website. And as you can see, those are pretty self-explanatory. Those are the ones that will be located on the homepage for Pender County Schools. The next slide, this is really copied and pasted from the Strong Schools Toolkit, which was updated on January 7th, and then updated again on January 10th. The only thing I could see that changed on January 10th was one additional line, which I'll get to in a second. You guys can read through that if you'd like to, if you have questions for any of the specific diagnoses and protocols. The Health Department will be glad to answer those or we will ourselves. So these deals specifically with the types of tests and what actions need to happen after those tests if they are diagnosed with COVID. The next one, next section of the slide deals with symptoms. All the changes are in red. Really, the key to it is five days, five days, five days. So most everything now is down to five days. The one thing that did not change is the alternative diagnosis at the bottom. You'll notice there's no red in that, in those two boxes. Students or staff that are diagnosed with an alternative diagnosis can return as long as they're fever-free within 24 hours without taking figure of this medication. These are the exposures. This is where it gets a little bit more complicated. The one thing I will say is that day zero is now uniform across the board. So day zero used to be different depending on whether it was symptom or exposure. Now it's all the same. Day zero is the last day exposed, the last day, first day of symptoms, and now your day zero is already consistent. You can also see there that the exemption for vaccinated individuals, if they're 5 to 17, they don't need the booster yet. Anybody 18 and above need the booster to be fully vaccinated. These are the exposure, exposure. This is, like I said, it got a little more complicated when they started breaking exposures out. But exposure, close contact with someone wearing a mask, if both people are wearing a mask, it's the top one, then the 90 days, if they confirm positive within 90 days, that still allows them to come back, but they need to continue wearing a mask for 10. And then the exposure exemption test to stay in masks required setting, those two areas are on there on purpose. In order for a district to go to implementing the test to stay program, it has to be a mask mandate or a mask policy in the district where you're in, like Marson. So that's the thing that's helping with that. Shirley, would you like to speak to any of those things?
Well, I'll try to, but first of all, congratulations to the school system. Really nice recommendations and recognition that you have seen, so congrats to that. Our county positivity rate is 29.9%, and the state is 30.5%. This is not any different than anywhere else, especially in our region. COVID cases are on the rise, have been on the rise, mostly due to the Omicron variant, which we understand is covering about 95% of the state as far as Omicron is concerned. We are seeing that there are fewer symptoms with Omicron, and that is a good thing and a bad thing because symptoms are milder. But the bad thing is that a lot of individuals are asymptomatic, so they could have COVID and don't realize it, and therefore they are spreading it to others. I think it's very, very important the message gets across that if anyone, staff or students, feel the least bit ill that they should not come to school. Many think that if they have sinus infections, this, that, and the other, it could very likely be COVID. I know that testing is limited, it's limited everywhere, but we encourage you to be tested. If you aren't tested and you have any COVID symptoms, you need to assume that you are positive. You know, your data, and if I didn't see your slide, Kevin, it's a little different, one in that the kids just started back to school yesterday, and in these past two days, you've had 95 kids test positive for COVID. You've had 311 kids exposed either to students or staff, which that's still running about three, three people per individual are being exposed and having to be sent home. So right now, you have, according to my numbers, assuming they match yours, about 444 students that are at home right now and 110 staff were, that may not be fair to say because staff were back at school starting the third. Anyway, you've had that, that many students and staff impacted since January the 3rd. So I think that everybody needs to be vigilant. As Kevin pointed out, there were some changes with, with the Strong Schools Toolkit, and we are trying to make sure that everybody's really clear on when they can return to school, when they have to continue wearing a mask. And one correction is that fully vaccinated does not include a booster. Fully vaccinated is strictly still the two-shot series regardless of age. Now, that's likely to change if the CDC wants it done, the state will make that change as well. I'm gonna let Shirley chime in for things that I may have left out.
I really don't have anything to add unless somebody has a question.
Can you, Shirley or Ms. Moser, based on the Strong Schools Toolkit, can you clarify that 18 age or older, based on that document? Because in there, it's 18 years of age or older have received, have received the primary series and the booster. Anybody under 18, they don't have to have the booster. That's what's written in the toolkit. And you, and we can get back to that later.
Okay, but it does seem like there's a clarification at the bottom of one of those pages, I believe, Shirley, that makes it clear that fully vaccinated is the two shots up to date would be including a booster.
Yeah, and it's if they're eligible. That's the other component of it. If they haven't met the threshold, they don't get a booster. Yeah. So that may be where we're getting discrepancy.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Steele, I noticed that the antibody waiver came out of the toolkit this time. Is that, I don't see it in there anymore. Is that true?
It was not included. We, still, and last time it was in the toolkit, it was left up to local decision. But we really, Carolyn, what are your thoughts on that antibody testing?
It's my understanding we're not to use it.
Yeah, I think the only thing, because in the past, the only reason why we used it in the past is if, if a child had symptoms and they were, and the parent was, or the staff member was pretty certain they had COVID but never got tested, and then they were exposed, we let them get an antibody test to see if they in fact did have, had been, had had COVID in the past. But according to, now that it's been taken out, we're really trying to stay away from that because we're really trying to stick strictly with the Strong Schools Toolkit guidance.
So the Strong Schools Toolkit also did away with the three months, if you've had it in the last three months. Didn't it, I didn't, is still in there?
That got added back. It, they, yeah. It was left out of the update, I think, of the last one, and they just put it back in in January the 7th.
Okay, because I looked at the 28th when they did the original, the 28th of December is when the first one came out.
This one's dated January the 7th.
Hopefully, listening to the press conference the other day in the state school board meeting, the ABC Collaborative has started a pilot program with test to stay for mask optional schools. They picked eight schools across the state. We didn't get picked, of course, but they're thinking that this, the mask, the test to stay program that's currently for the masked schools will eventually roll out to the mask optional here, hopefully in the next month before the next school board meeting, state school board meeting in February.
I, I know that a lot of this was for Duke University, and it had been, I would say over a month ago that I heard they were hoping to expand it.
Board members, is there any other questions for Mr. Taylor or the Health Department? Mr. Hall, do you have any questions? I'll take that.
I'm good.
All right, thank you. Oh, sorry.
There's one clarif, not clarification, one addition. The athletics component will follow the same guidelines. So basically, anything with athletics will follow these exact same guidelines. The state athletic association deferred to the Health Department the toolkit, so that's what we'll be doing.
So we've gone from 14, 10, to five, or seven to five. We're slowly getting there.
And also, on behalf of the parents that left the message called in, you can clarify that the reason why you have to dress mask every month is that your school boards are required to.
Yes, ma'am. Unfortunately, that is something they decided to make law, till June anyway, and expires. Thank you, ladies. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you.
7.2 bonus information. Dr. Hill, I think your name is on the.
Yes, sir, Mr. Kerman. So the state has come through with some information about the bonuses. It was voted on before the break. We worked diligently. Our finance department did a fantastic job getting the initial bonus out, trying to interpret as much as they could as far as the rules. What I guess the public really needs to understand, and our employees, is when there's a vote at the state, there's normally a rule setting situation beside, behind that. That takes several days. So when the rules come down to the finance department, it may take.
We still have not got some of the rules.
Well, it isn't really a set period of time.
That's right.
It can take from one to sometimes 30 days before they figure out how they're going to disperse the money. And so we tried to get those, they worked diligently, weekends to try to get that out as much as they could ahead of time, the bonuses. Now it comes the second wave, and there's several questions about how that should be done and before from some employees. We thought best if we just came to a board meeting, talked about it, explained it to everybody, and just took any questions that the board may have or anything you want to know more about.
Ms. Chestnut, would you please?
Well, I have, I brought the rules with me that I have, so hopefully if you have whatever questions you have, I hope I can give you the answer. So I guess.
We can go through these questions if you just want to, that we did. You want us to go through the document?
If you don't mind, just for the pub, I mean, we've seen it a dozen times now, it seems like, but there's people that's still quite unsure of who gets what and why some get it and some don't, and.
Yeah, I got you. I'm just going to kind of read from this.
That's fine.
I, I kind of summarized it over there. All right, there is a $300 lump sum bonus. State-funded teachers who as of January 1, 2022, is employed as a teacher in a public school unit. Teachers includes the instructional support personnel, and instructional support personnel is, is certified instructional support personnel who could be paid from the state PRC 001 and PRC 007. And that's important because a lot of our instructional assistants, you know, say, well, why did you exclude us? Well, I didn't. This is what the state says. This is all for certified staff. It is not for anybody but certified. And they have to be working and coded at the school level. And it's, one of the things about this, they always give us what we call FAQ, and one of the questions in the FAQ says, are locally funded and federally funded personnel eligible to be paid from state funds? No. The legislation states the bonus can be paid only to state-funded teachers from the state funds. They do say, of course, that you are eligible to pay them from other sources, which can be if it's a federally funded can be if it's a federally funded person, if it is approved by the state program director in Raleigh, you could, like, if the person's paid from, let's say, federal fifty, you and Mike could pay this bonus from federal fifty as long as it's approved by the NCDPI folks. If not, the other alternative you have is to pay it from local funds. Do you have any other questions about that one? Cause I think that pretty much covers it.
Any questions for that one, board members?
Okay, the second one that we addressed on here, man, my little computer don't wanna work right. Is the, um, one thousand dollar S R three employee bonuses that's paid from two oh three. Two oh three, by the way, is a federal fund. Interestingly enough, on a webinar that, um, I was on today, you can choose not even do this if you don't want to, because they said all federal funds is a fund that you, the school unit can decide to either use or not use. Um, I just thought that was interesting, that, you know, you can say, well, no, I'm not gonna take the two oh three money and, I just, I just thought you might wanna hear that, I don't know. Okay. So, this bonus is intended to provide a one-time lump sum bonus of a thousand dollars for every qualifying teacher who's salary is employed for state funds and who was employed on January one, twenty twenty-two. And this is the same, uh, these are teachers and instructional support, just like the other one was. They must have had a training between March twelve, twenty twenty, and January one, twenty twenty-two, that addresses the mitigation of COVID nineteen in public schools, learning loss resulting from the COVID nineteen, or virtual instruction needed because of it. The governing body of each public school system must determine whether an individual teacher or instructional support staff is qualifying teacher for the purpose of receiving this bonus. And we've already gone through, just so you know, the application process to be able to use this money if, if we choose to do it. So, that part has been done. Right, it's not local. This, this is a state, set aside, S R's money is not part of the other S R's money.
Lot that we got.
Right, right. And, um, this one has, the other one I just talked about, and this one has to be paid by January thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. And that's the reason we have to, um, we had to go ahead and do the application to get the money if we are gonna do it and, let's see.
Just Chestnut, just a quick reference. We have certified teachers that are paid by local, completely, totally paid by local funding, correct?
We have a few. We have a whole lot more paid by federal funds.
So, we have a mixture of local, and that doesn't qualify for this unless we find some other funding source, correct?
Under this one, that is correct. But I will say, under this one, it did say, I think it was this one, that if you have other S R funds, you can use to pay this if it gets approved, but as you know, as we have gone over many times, we have those S R funds set aside for other sites that we have actually already hired some of them or whatever, but this one says you can do that, the other one is not. But you cannot pay the local or the federally funded people out of two oh three.
Right, either state money, state funding, S R funds. So, do we have, and this is something that may lead into an action item is why I'm asking, do we have the means to pay those people, those federal teachers and those local teachers that doesn't qualify for this through other funding sources?
Well.
If we were to so choose?
I believe it would have to come from, uh, from local funds. What you said, Dr. Akins, is we have that other money already set aside, and I'm.
We'll do, we'll do whatever I need to do.
Right. And I figured out, and I, and I didn't bring it with me, I don't know what happened, how many actual folks are not, how many, and I think I, then I, maybe, yeah, I told you how much it would cost to do the non-state.
I didn't think it'd cost, it didn't cost at all, so.
I can't remember. It wasn't astronomical, but it was a good amount of money, when you think, I, I can't remember exactly, but.
Let me sit, get back in my email.
A thousand dollars of, business is a thousand dollars a person. I mean, it's pretty easy if it's a.
Approximately seventy.
Is that what it was, seventy?
Yeah, I could, I knew I did, I just couldn't remember what it was.
Uh, preschool is not eligible.
Right.
They're not included. Um, and then it also specifies that only certified secondary schools can be paid out of PRC one oh one and one oh, or zero zero seven.
If we choose to do this, I guess what we could do is specify that we will pay it out of local funds, and if there's, this one would work, but there was, there was a few thousand dollars left over here and there and some of the other ones, we could actually sweep it over to that, if, if y'all so desire. I mean, it would be like, you don't have to, you know, say, well, it's all gotta come from this, or it's all gotta come from that.
So, if we were to get to a point, and I, I'm assuming this is the time to ask these questions, Brandon.
Yes, sir.
Or Mr. McPherson, am I wrong? If we were to get to a point where if we paid these people out of local funds, and we get to the end of S R's, and we have, can we apply reimbursement, our local fund?
We, I mean, the way it would work is, uh, we would apply to the state, uh, seek an amendment and approval from the state to change any of the areas that we've told them. Um, assuming they said yes, they didn't have a problem with it, then that, yeah, what, Ms. Chestnut, what you just described, Kermit, would be exactly what we would try to make happen.
But it's not at the end of S R's, it's before, it would have to be before January thirty of this year, cause you can't cross fiscal year lines and switch money back and forth.
I mean, we can monitor it, and I can work with Ms. Chestnut month to month.
So, some of those projects we have with S R's money, we should know by, I would think by then, wasn't it?
Well, before June.
And I'm, and I'm like, you know, if it's ten thousand dollars, that's ten thousand dollars that we could, you know, put back over somewhere else and, and not have it coming out of local funds.
We are, we are checking it every month, so, I, I do think what Ms. Chestnut proposed is very durable. Um, assuming the state approved it, that would be.
Yeah, the state has to approve it, but.
But if it's in there, logic would tell you that they would not have a problem with it.
Yeah.
All right, sorry to interrupt you.
Okay. Um, and I think, can't miss that, this whole thing, the third one is the, um, other five hundred dollars of the, um, you know, we paid a thousand dollars out, that is the next one in it. Yeah, the one forty-one. You know, we paid a thousand dollars out of the fifteen hundred dollar bonus that's eligible for, from state for everybody there. This money pays everybody, no matter what funding source, and anybody that makes less than seventy-five thousand dollars gets another five hundred dollars, and that's what this is, is this last one, is just, you know, to finish up doing that now that they've actually got all the rules out here. Basically, what we needed to know is what the plan is for the three hundred and the other thousand, because if we have to have this stuff paid by January thirty-first, we are diligently working on all of it right now.
So, granted, the ones that you got directions to pay by the end of January, will have to be paid by January, but if the ones that, that we're having to find funding for, there, there's not a deadline.
Yeah, but these that we just went through are all deadlines of January thirty-one.
Even if we're paying them out of our own pocket, so to speak.
Well, if we don't pay them by January thirty-one, they won't be eligible for reimbursement for any of, like, from S R or whatever.
Gotcha.
Because there's actually some more stuff, I say stuff, some more bonuses or whatever, that we have not even gotten any directions on, which is not included in any of this. And they said this morning on the webinar I was on, there's some of them that's gonna be another four to six weeks before we hear about them, which is gonna require some local matches, which we do not have anything about right now at all.
So, Mr. McPherson, can we enter a motion without a true dollar amount? Um, I mean, there's three hundred in one pot and a thousand in the other, we don't have a true dollar amount, correct?
You can, you can give direction about who you want to be eligible for the bonus without a dollar amount, and then, uh, you, what you can direct the finance officer to do is come back to you with an exact dollar amount after, and where the money came from after the fact.
So, she can go ahead and process some.
Because what you're doing is you're clarifying who, who fits the category, and once you've clarified who fits the category, then you can move forward with figuring out how much it costs, cause frankly speaking, it's a bit of a moving target even for a finance officer to have the exact dollar figure, if that makes sense to you, because it's like another.
But also, with one of them, you've got to specify, and we, we gave you some language that said what we thought would be who, what COVID trainings is eligible for these people, cause they actually have got to have had a COVID training to be eligible for that bonus.
So, the, the one thousand dollar bonus from S O three is the one that Ms. Chestnut's talking about, and it requires a definition of what qualifies as a COVID nineteen training.
And how that, we will verify that they had it in, I don't even.
That's what's suggested for the board to have the principles.
Yeah, that was one of.
So, this, uh, board members, if you don't remember, the, the training that they referenced was virtual instruction and effective instructional delivery, learning lies due to, learning loss due to COVID nineteen, and how to mitigate it for it, and COVID nineteen mitigation measures at the site level. And I'm assuming most of our people have had that.
Whenever bonus.
I just can't imagine that we have many that don't.
So, I guess if, if we entertain a motion, we have to entertain a motion to approve those as the, as qualifying training.
That's exactly right, Mr. George. You have to define what satisfies the training requirement along with.
There's, be two motions that would need to be added to the agenda, one to.
To set the category.
Set the category, set the training, and the other to set the, okay, to seek funding sources for certified, not covered, not paid by state funds. Or the three hundred and thousand dollar bonus, does that sound right? All right, board members, y'all heard the presentation. Is there any discussion?
And, and as a reminder, Mr. George, if that, if this is gonna happen, this is currently an information item, so there would.
Right, we're at the, right.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
And board members, I can't make a motion, but I would entertain a motion.
For adding.
For, for adding, for qualifying the listed, um, COVID training as one motion to be accepted as a form of, um, for payment of the three hundred, I mean, a thousand dollar S R's three money.
So, my, my recommendation at this point would be to go ahead and add it to action portion of your agenda and then address those motions at that time, Mr. George.
So, do I need to add them separately?
That's what, what I would do is I'd recommend adding, uh, the bonus information to the action agenda and then addressing the characterization.
Gotcha, I understand that.
May I make a motion that we add the bonus, uh, add an item to the action agenda dealing
with the bonuses for our teachers or our employees? Is that general?
Nine point two. Nine point two.
That would be nine point two.
Have a motion, is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'm gonna have to do a roll call vote since, uh, Mr. Hall's not here. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Fontana's absent. So, we have nine point two, which would be bonus information under action. Thank you, Ms. Chestnut. I think you're still at bat for certified, non-certified substitute pay increases.
Right. Okay, um, this comes out of the information we get from Raleigh, and I just kind of did a little synopsis in here, but I'm gonna be reading from the page I get from Raleigh. And what they did, our substitute rates were eighty dollars and one hundred and three dollars. So, they put it out as a hundred and five dollars is the minimum, and eighty-one's the minimum for the license, licensed and unlicensed, but there's a caveat to that. As y'all are probably aware, they have gone the route of making, um, thirteen dollars an hour the minimum for really anybody that's paid on any type of schedule. And so, even though they gave us those rates underneath it, it says, the minimum salary for substitute paid with state funds should also meet the required thirteen dollars an hour per the law that went into effect. It is the responsibility of each district to verify that they are in compliance with this legislation. Well, I did a little, uh, chart so you could see, to meet the thirteen dollar mandate, the unlicensed instead of getting eighty-one would have to be a hundred and four. And if you went straight by the, that, then the non-certified would meet, would receive a hundred and four, and the certified would receive a hundred and five, because that was the minimum amount that the state said they could get. So, uh, in talking with different people to try to, you know, we're having a hard time as it is to get substitutes. If we changed the, uh, license, the same amount of dollars, then they would go from, um, they would get a hundred and twenty-eight dollars a day. And that, that's what I'm sure when there, if you dug over the straight thirteen dollar an hour mandate, the license would stay at the one oh five, which they have changed the minimum dollar amount, and the unlicensed would go to one oh four. But if you change it by the same spread of money, then the, um, unlicensed or non-certified would be a hundred and four, and the certified would be a hundred and twenty-eight. And just, just so you can see, as you know, on July one, the mandate's gonna change to fifteen dollars an hour. And so, I just went ahead and did the substitute rate, so you could see them, if, um, if you were interested in maybe going ahead and going to the fifteen dollars just to maybe try to help get subs, I didn't know, but as you can see, it would be the hundred and twenty dollars for the non-certified and a hundred and forty-four for the certified. But either way, um, I've got to know, because now this is not retro like everything else we're doing. This starts with subs starting on January first, so we will need to know, um, what you want us to do with this, cause we start paying subs, you know, at the end of January for, that will meet these criteria. I mean, we have no choice but to pay one oh four and the one oh five. And I would hope that we're not gonna pay just because they're, cause we do pay some subs out of local funds. I mean, with the way it stands, we could actually pay the folks that are paid out of state funds, the hundred and four dollars, and the people paid out of local funds, eighty-one dollars, it's not required, but I think that wouldn't, I personally don't think that would be a great idea, and it would drive our payroll department crazy. So, I really need to know if you want to, if we're gonna go with the thirteen dollar mandate, if, if you're wanting to do the hundred and four for the, um, non-certified and a hundred and twenty-eight for the certified, or if you wanna do the hundred and four and a hundred, a hundred and five a minute. We just need to know what it is you would like for us to do.
So, Mr. George, um, it, it sounds like Ms. Chestnut is requesting the board to take an action tonight and make a decision.
Oh, yeah.
Um, my recommendation would be that if the board is taking that action, that also be added to the action agenda. That would be motion, obviously, to do that, but that's, that's my recommendation. Ms. Chestnut?
We need it, yeah, if we're gonna pay the subs, I suppose.
So, you need to, you need to vote on the thirteen dollars per hour, even though it's mandated by the state?
Well, it, it sounds like there's some other options, Ms. George.
Yeah, I know, I'm just saying.
Well, that, no, but the problem, to me, the problem with that was, if you're not, if the, if the certified are gonna get one dollar.
More an hour.
Well, one dollar more a day then, so.
The voting is this.
Yeah, I understand. And you're, said July.
It goes to the fifteen dollars, yeah.
We're looking at four months, five months of.
Yes, I didn't know if you wanted to consider possibly going ahead to that.
And this is just for subs?
Yes, sir. I mean, you know, all, all the non-certified salary tables have gone to thirteen dollars an hour, and, and the good thing is, most of ours were there, we have a few that wasn't.
So, this would be, um, Mr. McPherson, this would be moved, if we make a motion, it would be item number nine point three?
Yes, if, if the board should choose to.
Make a, make a motion then to amend the agenda, add for action nine point three salary table review that was just presented by Ms. Chestnut for substitute teachers. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Aye.
Bless you, Carrie. So, we have, now have a new item, action item nine point three subpay salary table. Thank you, Ms. Chestnut. Now, we're in consent agenda. Board members, we've had a chance to review the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda?
Uh, yes, there is. Uh, I was reading through the, uh, four minutes, and there was one discrepancy that I found. I was reading through the board minutes, and there was one discrepancy that I found last month's board meeting, December 14. Item 10.3, the CFES, CF, CFMS fire system upgrade. It was shown on the minutes that, that Ms. Fontana and I had voted no, and we actually voted yes, and it was Mr. Smith and Mr. Hall who voted no. And that was the one discrepancy I found.
So with that correction, is there any, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second? Second motion. Roll call, Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries, consent up, then approve. Movement into action items, nine point one, masking protocols.
There's my name on it, Mr. Chair, but I think at this point, we know it's kind of mucked the muck, it's just the fact that the law requires us to take a vote. And again, I like to say, because I still don't think it's out there based on the call-in, that the board has no choice but to do this based on North Carolina law. It's not a local decision.
So board members, y'all entertain a motion on our masking protocols for the month of January and first week of February?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that Pender County Schools continues mask optional for this month.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say in our discussion that although I feel like that it's overreaching power by having to force boards to do this vote, that, because I think it's playing on political fear, and that we as a board, we try to put politics off to the sideburner, because this is definitely something that's not a political issue, and the board has diligently done everything it can to show that we want parents to have the right to make this decision themselves. So I'm thankful that we can, at least, even though we're being forced to do this vote, that at least we're being able to show where we stand. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Motion passed three zero. Ananimos, um, nine point two bonuses, we just discussed, what we just discussed.
So as a reminder, first is, first decision is to determine whether or not locally and federally funded employees will qualify for the $300,000 bonus. That is step one. Step two is setting the category for the $1,000 bonus. You can do this any number of ways, but that's the two decisions that lie before.
When you say set the category, you're talking about the training?
Yeah, yes, yes. Defining what qualifies as training for purposes of the $1,000 bonus. Is that correct, Ms. Chestnut? She's shaking her head, sir. We got it right.
So, board members, I entertain a motion to the accepting the pay schedule that includes the local and federally funded certified positions to be paid the $300,000 bonus out of local funds or funding source available.
Thank you, Mr. George. I will, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will make that motion as stated.
Is there a second? Mr. Hall's second. Roll call, Ms. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now we entertain a motion to training qualifications, to qualify the training methods authorized to pay these funds.
I want to make a motion to approve the training qualifications to afford these funds.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Burns is second, any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
So that is that. Thank you. Moving to nine point three, which we just discussed, subpay salary. We had two options available. One was to keep the distance with the $13 an hour, but make the 128, and the non-certified 81, or to go ahead and move to $15 an hour. Is that the right motion?
Well, it, it's not 81, that it's.
Did I try to find that?
Because the $13 for the non-cert is 104.
Oh, that's right, yep. Sorry.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that again? It was for 15?
The $13 is, is 104 for the non-cert, and 128, I have it right here.
128 for the.
And 128 for the certified, or at $15 an hour, it was 121.
144. Is there a motion to? Either one of those, or neither?
I'd like to make a motion then that we approve the 120 and the 144 pay rate, which would be the $15 an hour.
There's a motion to the $15 an hour mandate. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Motion approved. Comments from board members? Ms. Burns will start on your end.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This past Friday, I had the pleasure of attending all four of our mid-year graduations. And it seems that these mid-year graduations, the mid-year graduate numbers keep growing every time we do this, which quite honestly, I, I think is wonderful. It gives a lot of opportunities for our students to get out there and do whatever their next step is going to be. And I also wanted to say that I was extremely proud to attend Pila's first graduation. I thought it was, all the four of the graduations were great, but especially attending the first graduation of a brand-new school is always exciting. And again, as always, thank you, everyone, for all you did. Thank you, everyone who made all those graduations take place. I know there were a lot of hands involved in that. But for everybody across the board, I look at all of what we accomplished, what the, what the recognitions were tonight, and that is team effort at its best. And Pender County Schools has that, I think, in loads. And I know, thank you doesn't, it doesn't sound like a lot, but truly, whenever you go and you see the end result, like I did on Friday, it means a lot, and it shows just how much effort everyone is putting out. So thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Harry Truman once said, "It's amazing what you can accomplish if you don't care who gets the credit." And I think that every morning that each principal and teacher that looks in the mirror feels that way, that they know they can get a lot accomplished, and they're not trying to get a pat on the back or a award to put on the wall. But I do want to let you know that as we now approach this new nine weeks, that we are very appreciative of each principal, teacher, and hopefully of what has been seen with our vote on the substitutes, that we show that we are very thankful for the work that they are doing, because many of these substitutes are there almost every day during the week in a different classroom, and almost become just a familiar face, just like a regular teacher. So I am thankful for each and every one of you, and I'm also thankful that none of you try to get any credit, but I wanted to give you credit and say thank you for what you do.
Mr. Hall?
I don't have any comments other than, Bob, we probably need to get something out to moderate that we did not have a change on the mask policy, because I am already getting emails that people think that we just changed something. So other than that, I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I have nothing tonight. Mr. McPherson?
Really quickly, board, one of the many things that has come out of Washington, D.C. over the past six months is the OSHA emergency temporary standard. It was a mandate that was pushed out by the Biden administration that would require, specifically in North Carolina, both public entities and employers of over 100 employees to mandate vaccines with some exceptions for testing and or religious or medical accommodations. This, I've been monitoring this, as the board notes, since the situation presented itself. The current status of the OSHA ETS and vaccine mandate is that the United States Supreme Court, per argument, on Friday, and every lawyer who either represents a public entity or is in private practice or works for a corporation is digitally checking the U.S. Supreme Court's orders docket every day, trying to figure out if they're going to post anything to let us know what their decision is. So what has happened is we're still waiting on the U.S. Supreme Court to determine whether they're going to enter an emergency stay to prevent the implementation of the OSHA emergency temporary standard, which would require a vaccine mandate. So I'm basically awaiting that, along with guidance from the state of North Carolina regarding the Head Start vaccine mandate. So the vaccine mandates are, you know, sort of dominating a little bit of what's going on in the world. In addition to those items, the slow rollout of the state budget has affected not only Betsy's world, but mine as well, along with implementation of new state laws. Shortly provide an update to relevant state laws, provide the board a synopsis of that. With that, Mr. Chair, that's all of my comments for tonight.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Hill?
Yes, sir, I'd like to follow up on what Ms. Burns talked about earlier about the mid-year graduations, and I'll put some numbers to that for it's, there were 112 graduates this year. 17.36% of our total senior population graduated, so that's growing, as you mentioned. And I think the bigger piece here is what these kids are saying, or what's happening as far as they're enrolling after. Forty-four percent are enrolled in higher ed, 29% are going straight into employment, and 7% are enlisted. So I think that's all, but I think one kid has actually determined what's happening next in their life, so we're working with that. So that's, that's pretty good work, and I'd say that speaks volumes for what everybody's doing and how we get those recognitions from the state. But also, I just don't want to say this is a high school effort, because everybody, this is a pre-K to graduation effort, and what we like to say is pre-K to career here. So we're trying to make sure these kids end up with a successful, productive life, and I just can't do what you guys do, which is thank this, thank these people here and these teachers enough for what they're doing and all the support staff. So thank you, guys. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. We are now in, entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.
The Pender County Board of Education will enter closed session, subject to the advice from the attorney pursuant to N.C. General Statute 143-318-11A1 and A6, to prevent the confidential, the, excuse me, to prevent the disclosure of confidential personal information under, under GS 115C-319, and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee. The board will also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318-11A3 to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in N.C. General Statute 143.318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20U.S.C. 1232G, and N.C. General Statute 115-402. This closed session is also necessary to consider and give instructions concerning lawsuits entitled Burns Fisher versus Pender County Board of Education at all, state and federal.
Board members, you've heard the motions, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hall's second. All those in favor, Ms. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
We are in closed session. Thank you.
I make a motion that we adjourn to closed session.
Second the motion.
All in favor, roll call. Ms. Fontana?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Aye.
Board members, I entertain a motion to approve the human resource report and addendum.
I make a motion that we approve the human resources report and the addendum.
Second the motion.
Second. All in favor? Ms. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Hall? Ms. Fontana?
Aye.
Board members, 14.2 legal services. For your pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion that we table this issue until next month.
Second the motion.
Board members, there's a motion and a second for tabling the issue to next month. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Ms. Burns?
Aye.
Ms. Fontana?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Board members, you were given the closed session minutes for the meeting in December.
Second the motion to approve the closed session minutes for December meeting.
And to keep them confidential.
I have a motion to keep them confidential and accept them. Is there a second?
All second.
Ms. Burns is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of Mr. Smith? Ms. Fontana?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Aye.
In the final action of the night, board members, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
My second motion.
Ms. Burns has made the motion, second. Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Fontana?
Aye.
Ms. Burns?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
We are now adjourned. Thank you, board members.